Toss it and make sense. So it seemed like a viable option. And that's why we submitted our application for the zone change. Do you guys have any questions for us specifically?
At this moment, I'm going to open the public hearing and then we'll have those speak. And then if we have any questions, we'll have you come back up. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who are on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this zoning change? If you're on Zoom, feel free to raise your hand. Anyone who would like to speak against the zoning change, either in the audience or on Zoom? Diane Connolly, I see your hand up. You may speak.
Yes, ma'am chair. I'm not in favor of this. It may be urban around them, but it's not across the street with single family. I just don't feel this is a good fit for this area. They're not saying what their plans are going forward in regards to how many food trucks, their operating hours, or anything like that. I'd like to hear a little bit more about it. But zoning change wise, no, it's just not a good fit. I'm sorry. We have enough problems in the area when the soccer tournaments are going on. You know, it's just going to add to the problem. And depending on how many trucks they're going to have, what the hours are, and there's a whole bunch of host of other problems like emergency plans and so on and so forth. I'd like to hear more about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Anyone in the audience who are on Zoom who has a general question or comment to make? All right, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed, and I will open it to the board for comment and discussion.
When we approved the Nassau Apartments, didn't we rezone one of those spots to urban?
Nassau Apartments was actually a contract zone that did contain language very similar to the urban zone, but it's not urban zone, it's contract zone.
Okay. I mean, could we put on conditions as far as what they can and can't do?
So not in a zone change. In the zone change, we're talking just about changing the zone. They haven't applied for any change of use for the parking lot yet. They did mention that potentially down the road, they would be requesting site plan approval for a food truck park, but that technically has not been applied for yet. So what's before us today is just the request to change the zone, not approve the food truck park. If the zone is changed and they decide to move forward with the food truck park, they would come back through this review process. At that point, we would discuss all of the aspects of the park, access, hours, trash, waste, the whole gamut of requirements. But this discussion is just the zone change that would potentially allow them to come back with that.
So at the site plan, can we put conditions on what they can and can't do?
The ordinance allows us to have some conditions put on approval, yes.
My, I'm going to reiterate my stance on this. And, you know, even after reading the staff review, I think we can all agree that food trucks meet the comprehensive plan, but this is an urban, a change to urban zone, and we shouldn't even be considering the potential use that isn't even proposed yet. You could put a Hannaford, a Shaw's, any number of businesses on the lot when changed. I know that that's not the plan going in the future, but that's solely how we should be looking at this. I also don't think it meets the intent of urban zone because you can't actually have the density of urban zone without public sewer. And we've had numerous zone changes like this come across the board that don't hook up to sewer, and that has been the number one issue. I feel the more appropriate way to go about this would be to look at adding food truck parks as a conditional use in all zones.
That was discussed at the last meeting. The applicants weren't here to hear that and think about it, but that is an option. If you guys decide that change in these parcels to urban zone isn't the correct way, then they could change the request from a zone map amendment to change the zone on these two parcels to a zone text amendment to then potentially allow food trucks or food truck parks or both in the RR zone as a whole. So their request was for a zone change, a zone map change. So they would have to tell us probably after you guys, I won't say denied, but basically discussed the urban map change and then decided that wasn't the correct way to go and then recommend to them that they request a change to a zone text amendment instead.
Yeah, and I also hate that, you know, we're not quite there yet with the new comprehensive plan. But one of the things that I really liked was the idea of a transitional business zone and, you know, transitional residential for the in-between that doesn't quite meet the definition of rural residential, doesn't quite meet the definition of urban. But, I mean, obviously, we're not there yet.
Got a question.
Yeah?
Maybe I can pose this question to Matt. Thinking about the traffic that's going down that road, is zoning change going to be an issue with the, I know traffic is a little tight going through there. Do you have any concerns with that?
Yeah, traffic's definitely a concern through there. There's a few things that go into that. Number one, it's tough to tell what kind of traffic's going to be generated without knowing the exact use, like you were saying. And then, number two, this portion of that street is actually outside of the urban compact area, so it's technically DOT's jurisdiction. So as far as any, I think they do factor in changes of use when it comes to, you know, curb cuts and access points. But, I mean, I know they have existing access points right now, so it's not like it's going to be a new application to DOT. But as I said, I think change in use is something that they consider. So again, all those things kind of come into play when we have a specific development, yeah, and a site design, just because everything that gets triggered is based on trip generation and those, you know, kind of those peak hour trips, which we don't know.
So again, this review is based upon the urban zone and what uses are allowed in the urban zone, not necessarily the food truck park. Because today, they say they might do a food truck park. Tomorrow, they might say they want a McDonald's instead, or Starbucks, or Roma Joe's, or I could go all night. So again, when we're not given, if approved, we're not given approval for a food truck park. We're getting approval for all uses allowed in the urban zone.
So would a change to the RR zone for food trucks require the council to approve?
Yes. Any change to the zone ordinance requires recommendation from the planning board to the city council for a decision.
Doesn't the zone changes go to the city council too?
Yes.
So, I mean, they still have a say on this?
Yes.
Regardless. Yeah.
But we don't have to change the zone. Changing the zone, I was just going to say, keeping the zone as rural doesn't mean we can't have food trucks.
Correct, but we couldn't make the change to the food trucks, to the land use table or the conditional use section without first having a public hearing that specifically listed that. So we wouldn't be able to make that decision tonight.
Tonight. So tonight would be given the applicant's guidance on, you guys can say that, you can make a motion to not recommend approval to the change to urban zone. They could then choose to go to council anyways and try to convince the council it's the right decision. Or they could then choose to change their request from a map amendment to a language Or they could listen to this conversation and voluntarily say, we don't want to waste the time going to council. We're just going to call up planning department tomorrow and change that request. That's why I wanted them present during this conversation.
So Brian, what would you guys like to do?
Our preference is to have the property rezone to urban zone, and the main reason for that is because we are, we can have urban uses all around us as it sits right now, so that we have no control over other than to come to public hearings and voice our opinions four and again. So it just, it seems strange to us that we have urban zone to our right, to our left, and behind us, and our property is isolated and not urban zone. And I don't understand why, like, R96, yeah, why, like, R96 would have been zoned urban when it was zoned urban, and ours wouldn't have been zoned urban when it was zoned urban, or why R96F would have been zoned urban when it was zoned urban, and ours wouldn't have been zoned urban when it was zoned urban. So.
I can answer that.
Okay.
They used to be zoned commercial.
Okay.
And then we, at one point, we took all of these zones and put them all under urban. And because they were zoned commercial, they fell under urban.
So we could literally do, like, on the backside of our property, we could literally do annual husbandry there, and then you could have, like, an urban housing development on R96. It doesn't, like, it doesn't make sense.
So they would struggle because they don't have sewer.
So I was just going to mention, these two properties are in the wellhead protection zone, and they're in the zone that restricts them from being able to install a subsurface wastewater disposal system, a septic system. And public sewer is quite a distance in every direction. So even if it's zoned urban, it's highly unlikely, unless there's a sewer main extension that is pretty expensive. It would be highly unlikely that too many commercial uses are going to be allowed because of the lack of sewer disposal. Never say never, that somebody could extend the sewer and that.
What zone are the soccer fields in?
I'm sorry?
What zone are the soccer fields in?
So that is R964. That is one of the lots being requested to change to urban currently in RR. Ben, can you please pull up my screen? So this is the zoning map. The lots in question is the one outlined by yellow, but it's the two green lots amongst the, what looks like gray on the screen. That screen, or am I colorblind?
That's just because it's at an angle.
Okay.
So it's the two green lots surrounded by, like, the yellow or lighter green.
Yeah, R964 and 63. Yeah.
So those are both?
That's the soccer field and the two lots in question that are being requested to be changed to urban zone. So you can see on three sides of that, there's urban zone. Well, he just turned it off. Put it back on.
I was just showing them the soccer fields.
Yeah, so you can see the soccer fields. Whole area is within the wellhead protection area, and sewer, the closest sewer is down on River Street or Cottage Street, but pretty far away.
Would you be supportive of language change that would allow food trucks as opposed to, I guess, are you really, have your heart set on urban zone, or would you be willing to make an exception just to have the food trucks?
I mean, we were encouraged to go this route. Like, we paid a decent amount of money to go this route, and I think it would be, to me, it just seems, it seems strange to not allow it with everything else already being allowed in that area. So I just, as an organization, I guess we wouldn't understand the reasoning behind not wanting to allow it when people could use, could do the same thing on all three sides of us that we aren't allowed to do. So it just seems, and we can do things that could be detrimental to their properties because the zoning, like, the area that's not in wellhead protection on our property, like, the rural uses might not mesh well with an urban use that could be done on R96, so.
Land on the opposite side of that street is still going to be rural though? Directly opposite that property?
Correct. There's a, yeah, there's a street divide there, but, like, our neighbor to our left, our right, and to our rear can do urban uses on their property that we can't do on our property on the same side of the road. That would just be, I mean, so that as a, to me, it would make more sense to zone it consistently with, the map's not up there anymore, but with the properties that are immediate butters that have all been rezoned that way. I can only imagine to allow the uses that those particular properties wanted to use their properties for when those properties were developed, so.
Is the concern sprawled? I mean, are we kind of?
I was going to say, together, yeah, together consensus, are we in a spot where we feel like we can make a motion even if it was to table, or what do we, what do we think?
I don't think that makes, it makes sense to table it. I'd rather just do a vote.
All right.
But I will answer the surrounding lots, if they were rural residential today and they came up for a rezone, I would say it would not, they would not be consistent to be urban zone. It was a change that was done at one point in time, you know, I think it was one of the fallouts of changing from commercial to, you know, just including all the zones and urban. You know, and I think that's one of the, that's one of the areas that will be resolved from a comprehensive look at the zoning ordinances during this comprehensive plan study. But I don't want to further a incorrect zoning.
Any other comments from the board?
I'm okay with the zone change.
Do we have a motion?
I can make a motion that we approve the zone change for the soccer association.
Make a recommendation or?
A motion to recommend the city council.
A motion to recommend that the city council review a zone change to the urban zone.
From RR to urban.
Thank you, Jamie. Yes, what Jamie said?
Second.
So all those in favor? We have three. What's that?
Go ahead, sorry.
Oh, no, that's okay. Three votes that are for the change and three that are in opposition.
We'll call that first.
Sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, and those who are opposed to the change. My apologies. And three.
It's a tie vote.
So that would be a tie vote?
Doesn't pass.
Which means the motion fails.
Which means, I was going to say, which means the motion fails. What are the next steps for the applicant?
For us.
Well, for us and the applicant, so.
So for, the next steps for you would then be to make a motion, discuss as much as you need to, and then if somebody entertained a motion to recommend to the city council that they do not change the zone from RR to urban. And then they could take it to the council with a negative motion and then have the city council discuss whether they feel it should be zoned. Or they could take that and say, discuss them themselves, come back in and say, we want to change our request from a map amendment to a text amendment. If they do that before the city council makes their decision, then it does not cost money again because we can do it out of this application. If it goes all the way through the process and then they reapply for a text map, a text amendment, then they would have to pay the application fees again, just so you guys are aware. So you guys would continue discussion, and if you can't come to an agreement that recommend to approve, then somebody would make a motion, recommend not to approve, and they would take that to the council.
Wouldn't it end up as a split vote again, potentially?
But then if, I mean, those are really the only two options. If you have two fail to pass, then it's the recommendation not to approve.
My comment is, I guess, if there's a bigger discussion coming on zoning ordinances, I'm just a little concerned about making these little changes now.
So yes, after the comprehensive plan update, which we are halfway through-ish, so yes, we are making progress with the comprehensive plan. We are committed to not postpone it, as has happened in years past. So I do suspect sometime in the early stages of 2025, we will have an updated comprehensive plan. And then the next step after that is to amend our ordinances to then try to achieve the goals of said comprehensive plan. So it is very likely that there might be a zone change, both in map and text amendment form, for not only this lot, but all of Sanford, potentially. So if this doesn't move forward, there's a chance that this is done automatically on its own without them having to ask for it once we get to that process.
Can I ask a question of the board? As it stands today, development couldn't occur at the density of, that is currently allowed by the urban zone, based on the wellhead protection and the lack of actual infrastructure, sewer infrastructure. Also, the closest sewer line is on the far side of a mineral extract, active mineral extraction site, about a third of a mile away. The way to finish a mineral extraction site is to reclaim it in order for it to be either recreational parkland or development, at which time this whole area could be developed. It's not necessarily that far of a distance from our downtown comparatively to the rest of the rural residential zone. So I'm just wondering if at the time that maybe that lot, that's just currently mineral extraction, is fully extracted, is reclaimed, is ready for redevelopment, and then these two lots are also in that same kind of sphere where it makes sense that a sewer line extension could be, you know, it would make financial sense to extend that far. Is there still opposition to development in that area? What is the, what is the actual opposition to development?
It doesn't meet the definition of the zone, nor would the comprehensive plan. When it talks about growth areas, it doesn't have the adequate services, and there's no plan within the next 10 years to extend it.
It is within the growth area. It just doesn't have services right now.
It's not a growth area. It's zoned rural residential.
No, no, those are two different things. The designated growth area includes areas that are currently in all of our zones.
I would like to note that even if we do send this to city council as a recommendation for an approval, does not mean the city council will actually approve this. And vice versa, if we send it to them without request for approval, they could also decline it as well.
Ben, can you pull up my screen again, please? So this is the growth zone map from the previous comprehensive plan. The lot in question is right, basically where the 11 is.
What's it, can you scroll down a little bit?
You say scroll down?
Yeah, I'm just curious what that 11 stands for.
Conditional business office expansion.
So, like, I think that really has to do with where we screwed it up was, it used to be commercial zone, like, all the surrounding lots were commercial, and it makes sense, you know, because the zone's not intended for housing, you know, when you look at urban.
When the urban zone was created, it combined eight existing zones into one.
Were these lots excluded because of sewer, sewer lines?
So when we did the urban zone conversion, they basically just took those eight zones and followed those lines. There was no actual discussion lot for lot, is it urban, is it rural? It was just, we took those lines of those eight existing zones and followed them and made them all one color.
Got it.
So these two lots were rural before that change, so they stayed rural.
Right. Oh, yes. Is there a recommendation for city council, or?
I might be willing to change my vote. I just.
What are you thinking, Lenny?
Just curious what the long, does the soccer association have long-range plans for this? Is this like a 10- or 20-year plan, or are they thinking out?
It's irrelevant.
That doesn't applicable for this, for this application and what we're voting on today, unfortunately.
Well, it affects the association. I mean, every Indigenous Peoples' Weekend, they have a huge soccer tournament in their town that brings in hundreds of people from out of town to play in. I don't know how many different fields you guys use, but.
It's a lot.
Yeah. And I'm assuming that a food truck park is not going to be operating while they have these soccer games up there.
No, they are proposing to actually operate the food trucks during the off times of the soccer tournaments and soccer games.
Is this year-round? Food trucks year-round, or just?
I doubt it.
Yes.
No, they're, it's written as year-round, but who knows?
Which doesn't necessarily mean every time you drive by, if soccer's not in session, there's a food truck there, so keep that in mind as well.
Right.
The only other thing I think about when I think of that lot is just the traffic situation and the roads that just weren't built to handle high-volume traffic. That's all they were, like, country roads, they're not wide enough.
Those can be considered if, when, for a site approval, or, you know, when the project comes.
Turning lane, things of that, flashlight.
They'd have to make turning lanes or make improvements.
There's been a food truck parked there for a while now, or a food truck parked there. That's what I meant to say, not a parked there. For a while now. I drive by there all the time. The amount of traffic produced by a food truck is maybe two or three cars at one time. I mean, that food truck that's there now is basically right on the border of that plot of land. I, you know, I'm not arguing one way or another, but I feel like the issues that it would cause in the area are not going to be, are not going to be much different than the issues they have now in that area with traffic or parking. Basically, what they're doing is they're taking the food truck and they're moving it to the lot next door, which is a parking lot.
Right. But we're not talking food trucks. That's the problem. We're talking zone change. That's why I threw out the recommendation, we just make food trucks allowed in the all zones. Simple as that. Because food trucks aren't the issue here. The other, the issue is all the other intended uses. This area is not meant for those uses.
You can't put other uses in there if you can't run sewer to them.
That's true.
Yeah, there's no ability, well, there is an ability to run sewer there, but it would be highly expensive.
That's exactly why we shouldn't be rezoning it to something that you can't even use it for.
All right, I could put a food truck parked across the street from me.
Yeah.
All right, do we have a recommendation for?
I guess I forgot to mention a previous, if you guys don't want to do another vote because we know it's going to be split, I can bring it to city council, letting them know that the board was split, we couldn't get a positive motion. know that the board was split, we couldn't get a positive motion, instead of saying it was denied, because technically it isn't. A split vote is a no vote, but I could say that the board discussed it at length, and it was a split vote.
Can I make a motion to send it to City Council with a split vote?
Yep.
Motion to send this recommendation to change the lot from rural to urban with a split vote to City Council.
I second that. Am I allowed to do that? Okay. I second that. All those in favor? I can't see everyone's hands. There's four.
There's four.
Four. All those in post? One, four to one?
Two.
Two.
Two, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm here too.
Okay, great. So, motion passes. Motion passes.
I will reach out to you guys tomorrow, and we'll talk about which City Council meeting you can get on. Sounds good?
Good luck. You're welcome. Moving down the agenda, item number two, old business, file number J 30-47, Sanford Housing Authority Heritage Crossing. This is a preliminary subdivision. Construction of a 30-unit residential building and the associated parking and site improvements. This item will remain on the table at the applicant's request. Excellent.
Hold on just one sec.
I, I should exonerate myself for making any decisions?
No, it's on the table.
Sorry?
It's table.
This isn't coming before us tonight. They're still working on plan sets. It's going to be coming at a later date.
Sorry.
Nope, you're good, Todd. You're good. Item number three on the agenda, new business, file number R 869, Hanson's Ridge Road. I can't say this word. Is it Kiwanis?
Kiwanis.
Kiwanis, thank you, my apologies. Kiwanis Club Zone Change, request for a zoning map amendment to change lot R 869 from residential development zone to urban zone to allow for the use of private sewerage systems in conjunction with single-family residential construction.
What's that?
Yes, Mr. Kyle.
I'm a Kiwanian. I just want to disclose that with everyone. I have no personal interest in this project financially, so I'm going to leave it up to you guys whether you think I should recuse myself.
So, the bylaws say that the member discloses it, and then you guys would vote whether you feel it should be, he should recuse himself or not.
If you have no financial gain or involvement, I am okay with you remaining on the board. Go ahead.
I don't, no, I don't agree, but that's just my personal opinion.
So, you're saying he should...
He shouldn't. I mean, he's got no financial interest in it. I mean, anybody can be a Kiwanian.
Up to you guys.
I know plenty of Kiwanis members, and I'm close to plenty of them, so I, I'm okay with him not recusing himself.
I'm okay.
Yeah, all right.
I'll stick around.
Do we have to vote on that, or...
Do we vote on it?
You, you did a roll call vote. We're good.
Okay, excellent. You're welcome to stay.
I'll stay.
Jamie and/or Aaron, would you like to get us up to speed?
Yes, this went before the Site Planner Review Committee, and there was some discussion on the zone change and some concerns about the connection to public sewer and use of the land due to the contours and wetlands and the whole nine yards. So, it came out of site plan without really a recommendation, other than for you guys to discuss to determine if it meets the merits of a zone change.
Great, thank you. Hello?
Hello. I'm Rob Rankin. I'm from Reinkor in Springville, Maine. And Mark Patterson from Paco is in the background. We're here representing the Kiwanis Club of Sanford. Full disclosure, I am a Kiwanian. Mark is a Kiwanian. We are here solely to represent the club. We're not here in a business capacity. This is, this whole arrangement, this piece of land, is for the good of the community, and we can't express that enough. So, today we're here seeking a zone change. It's, it's needed to avoid a technicality of needing to bring the sewer up to this property at a expense that is just not manageable for, for anyone. The purpose is to create two building lots for the purpose of selling to the, the building trades, sorry, the building trades, the S R T C, to build their future homes. Those homes naturally are sold. The funds from those sales go directly back into the program. The funds from the sale of these lots go into a foundation at Kiwanis and is, again, sent out into the community. So, the whole scope of this project is for this community. The dilemma we have is the sewer. The sewer, Hanson's Ridge Road, in this particular location, it's all bedrock. And the lot itself has a lot of bedrock and also has some wetlands. So, the distance that the sewer line needs to travel to serve these two homes is just cost prohibitive. It's probably, the cost of putting in is four times the value of the land. It just makes no sense. It's certainly the reason why the sewer line has never gone up Hanson's Ridge Road. It's something that was put into place because of the zoning that is currently there. It borders, it borders urban business on one side, it's rural residence on the other side. So, we're here seeking a zone change to urban business, which we abut solely for the purpose of not having to extend the sewer to this property. An alternative, which I'll let the board think about, is for the board, I believe you have the capacity to waive that condition in the current zone, and that would resolve the problem as well. That's an alternative solution, I suppose. But that's why we're here. It's all for the community. It's, you know, it's just a tough, tough situation. It's a condition that we can't get around, and, you know, certainly running a sewer line up Hanson's Ridge, it's just not, not going to financially be feasible at all. Welcome to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. I'm going to open up the public hearing, and then have you come back if you have any additional questions. Thank you. So, with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience or on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? You can step forward.
I would. Mark Patterson, Sanford Kiwanis Club. So, one thing that I sent, this is the time that we could put up the GIS map that shows this lot in question.
Ben, can you pull up my screen, please?
Okay, so, if you're looking at this, it's a yellow map, a yellow-lined area. The green spot in there is a pond, and there is a stream that runs behind the property all the way down. I think it goes underground at that point, doesn't it, Jamie? Goes into storm sewer?
I think it goes into storm sewer. I don't think right at the line, but in that area, yes.
Yeah, and it goes there until it hits, I think, behind the parks, behind Town Hall. So, you know, you can see that even though we're only 200 feet from the manhole down at the bottom of the hill, much of that property has a very flat grade where the pond is, so that area is not buildable. You have to go up, you know, quite a ways, like 300 or 400 feet, before you hit buildable land. So, this is a unique situation. It's not something, you know, Rob Rankin develops apartments, you know, I've developed a lot of townhouses and different things. This property, even though it's zoned for high-density in RD, is just not, it's not feasible. By the time you get done with phosphorus control and everything, there's going to be virtually nothing that can, much that can go on this property. It's a unique situation. And as Rob said, one, we get a zone change so we can do it and not connect, create two lots and not connect the sewer, or B, eliminate that requirement in the RD zone, maybe with a waiver, as Rob suggested, or maybe an ordinance change that does not require in the RD that you hook up the sewer. Matt Pederman here is the, what are you, the principal or superintendent of the vocational school program?
I am the director.
The director. And, you know, this year, this program has raised well over $400,000 with donations and student labor, which is given credit when we build a home. In this past year, we gave $40,000 in scholarships and tools to graduating seniors in this program. So, it's an awesome program. It does a lot of good. It's very exciting, and other schools around the state are jealous of what we're able to accomplish with the donations and this program and working with Kiwanis. So, we're hoping that we can somehow figure out a way with the planning board and the council that we can make this land useful and continue the program.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. Matt Nelson, Superintendent of Schools, 917 Main Street, Suite 200. Just to kind of piggyback, first of all, thank you for the opportunity and thanks for the consideration. Much appreciated. As a school department, we try to work closely with community and city. Mark mentioned you're looking at a very beneficial opportunity for Sanford Regional Technical Center, first and foremost for our students, not just our building trades program. This is also talking about our electrical program, our plumbing program, our horticultural program. There's a lot of things that come in and be able to touch that from a learning standpoint. But we also think, as Mark mentioned, there's a tremendous value also back to the community in terms of when we're looking at for housing, trying to have that worked more towards people who are part of the school system or in the public service, part of the city, in terms of trying the housing crunch with that. So, I just wanted to come back to reiterate our standpoint of the benefits to this in different ways, and thank you for your support.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience or on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? I see your hand raised on Zoom. Go ahead.
Yeah, again, I'm Matt Peterman. I'm the director of the Sanford Regional Technical Center. This is an extremely unique opportunity for our kids in multiple programs. We're kind of almost to a point where we're getting to a standstill because we're trying to develop additional lots. Each class, we try to build a house each year, so each class kind of moves on. We're trying to get into a rhythm, but, you know, this, this change or exemption would really help us continue our progress. Our goal is to get a foundation in the ground before winter. We have a house that is in the process out back behind the school. It needs a home, needs a piece of land, and we're really hoping you all will consider that, and, and we can keep marching on. I have kids that are chomping at the bit, ready to go.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this zoning map amendment? Anyone who would like to speak against this? Thank you. Either in the audience or on Zoom?
We did receive a communication via email.
Great. Do you mind reading that into the record?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
This is from Linda Le Tournau. "I live at 32 Hanson Ridge Road in Sanford. My neighbor and I both have wells. We get the runoff from the hill above us. I am concerned about water contamination if the Kiwanis Club land zone is changed. I am a 74-year-old woman that has lived in this home since I was eight years old. I cannot live here if I have contaminated water."
Great, thank you. And Diane, I see you have your hand raised.
Yeah, my comments are neither for, against, if I may continue.
Let me go ahead and follow up with, make sure everyone who wants to speak against this does, and then I can circle back to you in a moment, if that's okay?
That's fine, thank you.
So, anyone else in the audience or on Zoom who would like to speak against this zoning change? All right. Anyone who has a question or wants to make a general comment? Sure, I'm going to have you speak after Diane, if that's okay? Thank you. Diane, you may go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
I certainly can.
Okay, I didn't know if I put it back off of mute. My, my comments are not for, against. It's, it's just some comments in general. About five to eight years ago, the planning board went through the same exact question with Mr. Carpenter and a piece of property that was on Hanson's Ridge down by Harry House. Because of Zoom, the map was taken down, so I couldn't have a really good look at where this property was. But I remember saying it was a great idea, but the wrong area. And the planning board then shot Mr. Carpenter down, who was also using Kiwanis property, for the very same reason that, that you discussed about sewer lines. And I understand there's some problems with this area and the soil and so on and so forth. But the comprehensive plan says you've got to bring the sewer up, and I don't think we should make exceptions also in the future. I'd like to see a change with the school in regards to having the piece of property, the land, the zone okayed before we come to these conclusions about whether or not a house is supposed to go on these properties. These should be set forth before, so we don't run into this problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You may step up to the podium. As a reminder, do you mind stating your name and your address, please? Thank you.
Can I just make one comment?
Absolutely.
Diane, this is that same property, just so you know.
Thank you.
Brittany Favre, 17 Oakridge Road in Sanford. So, very far from there. But with the conversation about sewer and all of that stuff, it always makes me question, is there a way ahead of time to find out if that would actually be an issue? So, we talked about it may be an issue, but how can we figure out if it would be an actual issue or not? There's always a lot of what-ifs in life and in the world, but doesn't mean that they're a guarantee. So, I guess my bottom line is, do we have a way to know if it's going to cause an issue to the well water? And if there is a risk, are there ways to avoid that risk without bringing a whole sewer line, which, you know, seems to be a big issue, all the way there? So, can you find a happy middle ground that works for everybody and protects everybody? So, I have.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who has any general comments or has any questions?
Steve Cabana, 9 Hemlock Drive. I'm just hoping for some clarity from the board. The previous topic was you don't want to change to urban because there's no public sewer, and here we're trying to change a lot to urban so they don't have to connect to public sewer. And I, maybe I misunderstood the first topic tonight, or maybe I'm not understanding this one. one, but I'm hoping someone can clarify that for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, if I could also, Crystal, we did get an updated memo from Andre Brusseau, the Sanford Sewerage District Superintendent.
Yes, if you could read that in, that would be great.
Great. Um, so this is dated, dated, uh, November 6th, 2024. Uh, "The said parcel could be connected to existing infrastructure located at the intersection of Hanson's Ridge Road and Douglas Street. Although the invert to rim elevation on the structure is not overly deep, the rise in topography along Hanson's Ridge Road could support a deeper sewer line with supporting structures. The existing line in Pine Street is a bit deeper but will require a sewer easement to install the sewer infrastructure on private property. Upon further review, the parcel could be supported by a small private collection system. The system may consist of sewer pipes using gravity to achieve proper discharge. If the residential structures are situated in a way that does not support gravity flow, then a small private pump station can be utilized to discharge to the existing public infrastructure."
Great, thank you. Anyone else who wants to make a general comment or has a question? I see a hand raised on Zoom, go ahead.
One, one final comment. We got an estimate on what it would cost because of the blasting, the culverts that go across Hanson's Ridge in that area, and, uh, with blasting, traffic control, multiple, um, catch basins, we're estimating it to be around $200,000. The value of these lots is about, if we create two, is probably $50,000, $60,000 apiece.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm sorry, can I just follow up on that?
Yes.
What Andre meant in his memo is instead of doing a sewer main extension up Hanson's Ridge Road, um, you could potentially do a private collection system on R869, either gravity or go to a pump station and then do a small pump line down on your private property to Hanson's Ridge Road and door Pine Street if you could get a sewer easement, so that it's not installed in a six or an eight-inch sewer main extension. It would just be a much smaller trench, potentially for a individual four-inch line or potentially a two-inch pump line to one of the existing manholes without the cost of a sewer main extension, because you own a lot of the property that gets you almost to a line and then would potentially, uh, an easement, you could, you could then tie into an existing catch basin without having to install new catch basins, without having to, to install a sewer main extension at a much less cost of a private system.
I, I understand what you're, where, where, uh, Andre's coming from, but you've still got to get the easement, uh, from the butter in order to make that happen, uh, like we could go over Pine Street also, but it's, it's very difficult to get those done.
Okay.
And it's not inexpensive to run 600 feet of private sewer, especially through a wetlands.
Okay, it's noted, thank you. Um, with that, if there are no other comments or questions, I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm going to open it up to the board for discussion.
This property is in the headwaters of Good, Good Old Brook, which the restoration plan, I believe, did not want to see septic systems in that area.
Good Old Brook is a, a at-risk, um, and there has been actions over the last five or six or 10 years to try to clean up Good Old Brook. Um, so while they can't say you can install septic systems, you are correct that they are trying to do everything their power to reduce the pollution going to the Brook.
Can I make a question?
Yes.
Um, I know we've looked at development on Hanson's Ridge Road before and large, large volume septic systems were not, didn't work ideally because of the bedrock that you've spoken of, the drainage was not very good. Um, is there potential for more houses being built here, or is it just the two structures?
I had the same question because in the documents we had, there's proposed for two dwelling units, but it says up to possible 32 dwelling units.
So that's my interpretation of the zone, the RD residential development zone with the density bonus that was approved this year, up to 10 dwelling units per net acre. So for an, uh, parcel the size of 3.27 acres, they could get up to 32 dwelling units with the agreed-upon net density of the RD zone.
As long as they hook up the sewer.
If they hook up the sewer, but if you had 32 dwelling units, the $200,000 cost of extending sewer is only 10, it's less than $10,000 a, a unit. Yeah, with 20 units on there, it's $10,000. So, I agree, cost prohibitive for two dwelling units.
I was just thinking the same thing.
And I'll just remind the board again, we're not talking about two houses tonight. We're talking about a zone change from one zone to another, and then at that point, any use in that zone might be allowed. It's, both cases, we were told, uh, potential future use, but, um, we are, we are truly discussing just the, the zone change at, at the surface.
The other house they put up, they split that property, correct? So is this a subdivision?
They split off a lot, but, um, they're using the five-year, uh, in-between lot splits.
Oh, okay.
So they could still put one house with a, um, septic system, currently?
That, uh, is actually a topic that I just started to look into last night. Um, so the way the ordinance is written is it says, "Any new development other than the construction of a new single-family home on an existing lot shall be connected to the public sewer system operated by the sewer district." Um, so because it doesn't have, uh, existing lot at a specific time, it goes back to when the ordinance was written, and we actually did amend the RD district, um, last fall. So while I will say the code's office has not 100% discussed and verified that this information is correct, but there is a chance that because of our zone amendments last fall, that the, the lot that exists today as R869 would be considered an existing lot under that provision, and if that is the case, then potentially they could install one more house, um, without connecting the public sewer. Again, that, I, I wasn't going to mention unless asked, but you asked, so I did mention it, so there, there is a possibility. I need to do a little bit more research to verify that, but there is a possibility that is the case.
And with the change to urban, would they be required to hook up sewer?
The urban zone does not have that requirement in it. That, that is specifically only in the RD zone.
That's pretty, uh, random.
We've discussed over the years, we're very, we're very, uh, much in agreement that our ordinance needs to be, um, revised and looked at and corrected. That is coming after the comprehensive plan update.
So when we're talking about the soc, soccer field, you brought up the fact that they have to hook up the sewer.
Yeah, um, when you look at the comprehensive plan, when it talks between urban, uh, zones...
They're talking about urban, changing this to an urban zone. There is no urban business zone, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct. That was an old term.
Right. So, why wouldn't they have to hook up the sewer? And they're in the RD zone, too.
What's that?
They're in the RD zone, which requires it.
Mm-hmm.
Unless they put one house in. That's how they got away with the, the other house just north of that.
When you looked at the comprehensive plan, when it talks about the difference between a rural property and a, and a growth area property, it defines the growth area as having the necessary utilities. And in this case, the utilities are right there. It's just cost prohibitive.
So I would agree that a lot of the same conversations you guys had on the previous request would be pertinent here, and I will become a broken record and say the same things, that there's many ways to get to the end goal here. Um, there's a zone map amendment, which is what was requested. There could potentially be a zone text amendment, um, for the requirement of the RD zone to connect to public sewer. If you read it, it sounds like they were trying to say a single-family house is okay, but anything other than that's not, so you could potentially change the language and say, "Single families are allowed to connect to private sewers, but anything above a single-family has to connect." You can say that any sub-development has to connect, but individual single-family don't. So there's, if you guys entertain that, that motion, um, that discussion, you, you, we're here to discuss a, a map amendment tonight because that was, what was requested by the applicant. But again, they could then request a change from a map amendment to a text amendment if you guys feel that might be a better option for them.
Can, is it, can the planning board just grant a waiver for this project?
They cannot.
Cannot, okay.
I think originally they wanted to split the property up in five pieces.
I don't remember, but I, I do believe it was more than technically three.
Yeah, because it would allow for a minimum of half-acre lots, roughly, um, because state law requires 20,000 square foot lots for private septic systems. And I think that's probably why, I, I can guarantee that's why they're required in residential development zones, because having one unit per half-acre defeats the whole purpose of the zone.
The RD zone is another zone that is, um, created to promote, uh, density, um, so, that is why the requirement was put in to require the public sewer, because yes, a, a 20,000-foot lot is not a dense development pattern.
And just to be clear, I was talking about the urban in the comprehensive plan, not the urban zone, per se, that's in our current zoning ordinance.
What's the difference?
Uh, the comprehensive plan talks about the different areas, the urban compact area. She showed the map, and if you look at the, you know, uh, the growth areas versus rural areas, um, it doesn't line up perfectly.
I suspect there will be some pretty drastic changes coming to the urban zone post comprehensive plan update.
So my question would be, why, why aren't, why not put more homes on lots? Where's the applicant? Yeah?
I think because of the, uh, topol, topography and the wetlands that exist, there's only room for two lots.
You know, I think we talked about these lots, that, this lot and ones above it. I mean, this is probably the third time we've talked about this area, and when looking at it, probably should have just been zoned rural, given the characteristics of the sites.
We discussed that a little bit at site plan. Um, so rural residential is across the street, um, so it wouldn't be too far-fetched to potentially change it to rural for, for those reasons. They don't have enough, uh, landmass to then get two houses if we go to the rural standards of one dwelling unit per two net acres.
Unless they were to designate one of the homes as an accessory dwelling unit and keep the lot as one lot.
Because they, they could do a single-family with accessory. The accessory does not count towards density, so they could still potentially put two single-family homes on a lot, but it would have to be sold as one lot, and the owner would have to agree to our ADU requirements, which one of them is that one of the units has to be owner-occupied.
Could I ask a follow-up question in regards to, uh, the waivers? Um, is the sewer requirement, is that considered a condition of the zone?
The planning board has got the authority to waive provisions in the subdivision ordinance. They do not have the provisions to waive anything in the zoning ordinance. Uh, this provision is in the zoning ordinance.
Okay. I, I didn't understand it when I read the waivers of standards. Um, it's, it looks like it, the planning board can if it's for, uh, special circumstances.
Again, only if it's the subdivision ordinance. The only way to get any, uh, relief from a zoning ordinance is through the zoning board of appeals.
Okay. All right. And, uh, one, one last thing. Ironically, uh, it was mentioned before, um, if you are on the left side of the road, you don't need sewer. You, on the right side of the road, you need sewer. Seems a little unfair to, uh, the applicant.
But the left side has a net density of, uh, one unit per two acres.
I've got a question, maybe more of an engineering-type question. How well, how effective are these septic systems going to work on this property?
Septic systems are designed under state, uh, requirements. Um, so a septic system that is designed under state requirements, which is the only way one can get installed, has to meet certain specifications, and a septic system properly designed and installed will work. For instance, state law currently says you have to have 12 inches of native soil between the, the surface today and a restrictive layer. In this case, restrictive layer might be ledge. They would then have to bring in more, uh, approved sand to raise that elevation up to then provide the proper separation distance for a proper filtration. So, again, a, a septic system designed by a main licensed site evaluator and installed per plan, um, would function properly on this site.
And it wouldn't pose any risk to the, uh, the watershed?
There's setback requirements, there's design criteria, all designed to prevent, uh, pollution. Uh, never say never, that you can have a septic system installed today that fails in a month, or you can have a septic system installed today that's in the ground for 50 years, works perfectly fine. So there is potential that any septic system, um, fails. There's potential that a public sewer system gets a plug and discharges, um, raw sewage into a wetland. Um, it's, with any system, there's potential for failure.
I just mentioned that because there was a, I guess, I don't know if you call it a retirement home or something on that road, and the, uh, septic system had failed, and it was actually, water was actually pooling on the surface of the ground around this facility, and it'd been...
Septic system rules have changed a lot over the years, so it is much more likely for older systems that have been in the ground, say, 70, since the 70s, 60s, 50s. Um, those systems, uh, prior to early 70s, you didn't need any requirements for septic system. It's whatever you decided you wanted to do today was a septic system. In the early 70s is when the state adopted rules on installation of them, um, and the rules have evolved immensely since then. Uh, say a three-bedroom septic in the early 70s, when the rules first started, would be 10-foot by 20-foot. A three-bedroom system today is 20-foot by 45-foot. Um, so it's, it's, uh, five times the size it was back when permits were first required. So again, the state has evolved the, the requirements over the years to try to make it so septic's fail much less often.
You're thinking of Mountain View Nursing, huh?
Yeah. It was the, uh, the ledge, I think, under the building that prevented the, uh, the drainage from preventing pretty much any sewer system, septic system, from working properly.
And that was a system that was installed prior to any requirements.
And you're saying you can't have 32 properties on there, 32 houses without the sewer system? Is that right?
Did you say 32 houses?
Yeah.
Uh, correct. If they was to do a dense development with that, it would have to connect to public sewer.
So what's the max that they could build with a septic system?
State law says it's 20,000 square feet of land for a septic system. Um, so at two and a half acres, that would be five houses? Six houses? Seven houses?
Seven houses.
You're talking about a zone change, so I'm not just thinking about today, I'm thinking about tomorrow. It's, what's it going to look like tomorrow?
Yep, we also brought up during site plan review if that, if it's changed to urban and developed in that respect, there might be some other provisions that could be applied, such as the installation of sidewalks. That would also be cost prohibitive, but that's something that only the planning board can waive. So are we rezoning parcels to be urban and then waiving sidewalks and allowing septic systems in the urban zone?
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are we changing, or is, is the suggested, the suggestion to change to keep two houses?
Nope. The request is to change map R869 from RD to urban. Nope. The request is to change map RH 69 from RD to urban. They have mentioned that potential future plans might be to put two houses on them. But that's not what's up for discussion. What's up for discussion is the change from RD to urban.
I think we discussed it last time, this came up. Since it is in a growth area, they can apply for a growth zone. They can do a contract zone, but you still wouldn't be able to waive the requirement of the existing zone?
A contract zone can waive any requirement. The city council, a contract is basically what I call a legal spot zone. Spot zone in, in state statute is illegal, but through the contract zoning process, it's legal. So through a contract zone, any provision of the ordinance can be waived if the project meets comprehensive plan suggestions.
Any thoughts from anyone else on the board? Do we feel like we're at a spot to make a motion, or?
Do you think a contract zone is a better choice?
I mean, it's a unique property. It doesn't meet the character of, or the intention of urban zone. We're using urban zone to Band-Aid a, it being zoned residential development back in the day.
I would caution the board of setting a precedent to pass a contract zone in order to allow for single-family homes to be built in a zone that allows single-family homes currently.
I'm, I'm not sure that will pass the attorney's review at the council level. Contract zones are typically designed to allow uses that are newer than the comprehensive plan, so they might have been excluded from a table of land use when the comprehensive plan was updated. But because things have changed now, still kind of fits the comprehensive plan, but the, the zone doesn't allow it. So I would, I would recommend lots more discussion on potential other ways to make it happen long before I suggested the contract zone.
So much like the last property, you know, and I hate when we do zone changes, that there is a proposed use, because that use isn't proposed currently, and it biases us. But does this zone meet the other, like, would you see the other uses allowed in urban zone on this lot?
Possible.
Definitely possible.
Just as it was possible up Hanson's Ridge.
Utilities are there.
And I, I guess I will remind you that the last zone change discussion, we talked about not changing it to urban because they can't connect to public sewer, that's one of the reasons. And now we're specifically talking about allowing a zone change to urban, so they don't have to connect to public sewer. So we do have to be consistent in our decisions.
And sewer is within striking distance?
Correct. In fact, it's within the 200-foot requirement of the sewer district that their policy is to require sewer infrastructure hookup if you're within 200 feet.
I think this is a great project. I think it's great that the high school can build houses, and I'm, I'm glad that they're doing it. But I would have to agree with the comment that Diane made. I mean, you should have a spot for that house before it's, at least a general idea where you want to put the house before. You know, instead of just build a house and find a place for it, you know, find a place first and then construct one of that, one of that area.
I can speak a little bit about that for the school district. The program in years past sells the house outright, so they, they, they leave the options open. The purpose of the program is to teach the children how to do the work. So several of the houses were built, and then say, I went to the school and said, hey, I, I have a piece of land, I'm looking for a house. How much will you sell me your house for? So one of the options is to sell it direct. One of the options is to put it on a lot that they own. Another one is to work a deal and work collaboratively together. So the, I don't believe the school department wants to limit what they do, because the intent isn't for the school to get rich off this. They're not making money off these. The intent is to teach the children. So they want all of their options open, not they have to own land and have to put it on this lot. There's, there's lots that come open. They, they might get approval to change this zone, and then they might actually have a lot become available closer to the school where the kids could more easily access it and decide to send the next one on the road next to the school, because the kids could do more work on it. So I don't think they're interested in locking down where each house goes. I think they're trying to make it so that there's lots of options available, so there's never a year that the kids don't get a chance to build a house.
Yeah, we're being asked to consider a zone change for a specific project, and that's, that concerns me.
I was in the program and was caught in one of the years where the foundation was utilized, and there was not a house built.
And please, anybody from the school department, correct me if I'm wrong on the way I just said that.
Yeah, you're going to have to come to the podium, so those who are on Zoom will be able to hear you.
Peg Lavaster, I work for SRTC and helped manage the house project. The last house that was up, or the first house that they have done this process with is on Hanson's Ridge, and it's then the upper lot attached to this. And that was done in 2017. Prior to that, it was more like what Jamie was saying, is that the house, they built the house as much as they could on the lot. It was framed up, walled up, and then it was like, who wants a house? Come take it, it's yours. But we changed it up with the help of Mark Patterson to do it so we have a start-to-finish program. So we get to see, the kids get to see the foundation getting set, the excavation going on, laying out of the lot, the whole big process, not just the stick building of the house. So it is important for us to have places nearby that we can do this, or we may have to go back to that other model, where the kids just, you know, hammer out a house and say, wave goodbye in the back lot and say goodbye to it, versus being it from start to finish. And we're trying to do it in a way that we have the juniors start a house, and as seniors, they finish it. So they have ownership of that, because it's a big thing for the students to drive by and say, hey, I built that. You know, remember when we did that? Whatever. It's, it's a big thing. The one we did, completed on James Ave last year is a street over from the very first house they had ever built on Milton Ave, back in the 70s, I think it was. So it is a big project, and we can't always say that, yeah, there's a lot available. I think, I don't know if Jamie can attest, there's not a lot of available lots out there for us to just, you know, keep reinvesting our money into getting a different lot here and there. And the Quantians are helping us out with this, and we're kind of helping them out with it as well, you know, to provide them funding. It is a lot that, you know, it doesn't have a lot of options in it. If you put 32 units on there, you're going to have runoff on driveways versus septic issues. So there are different things to consider, and it's just, you said the project is something we'd like to keep continuing and to move this forward in a, in a regular pattern, so that we can have students start and students finish within their two years with us.
Thank you. And that makes sense. It's actually why I asked, why are, like, why not build more houses? So if you have this land, and you have the room, I understand that there are some obstacles, such as the, the wetlands, and you have ledge, et cetera. But if you have the land and the option to build additional houses, why not take advantage of that?
Cost.
I understand the cost, but would you, more houses equal? All right. So where does the board stand?
I think the solution, I mean, my solution is change it to resident, rural residential, but that does nothing, because you're still only building one house on that lot. And if you're going to bypass sewer.
We also need to be consistent with the decisions that we make.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if that goes in line. Todd, would you like to say something? Okay.
It's, it is a tough decision. I think that I want to be consistent with previous, in fact, all, all night, everything is about changing the zones to accommodate individual needs, and that's becoming a problem. Not, that'd be a concern for us. We couldn't do this every, every two weeks, change every particular issue for a particular property. So I, I would like to stay consistent. I would like to find a way, other way to get two houses built in this, in this area that they can have, put homes in there, have the kids working on a project from beginning to end, but not change the zone every time, because it's a bad precedent to keep doing.
Thank you.
I agree. I don't think we should change the zone.
Yeah.
We want to change it, change it to RH, and let them put one house in there.
I, I agree with that. It's a great program, and I, I think it's wonderful. But we also need to be consistent in the decisions that we make now and going forward. Are we in a position, yes, Lenny? Oh, are we in a position where we feel as though we could make a, a recommendation for a motion, or? I'm happy to hear. Oh, I might...
A, a comment, you know, we, we submitted this for, based on our discussions with Jamie about what we could do, because we also talked about single-family zone, you know, but in the end, it was just, how can we get this by with two lots? And he thought this was the best way to go. You know, the only other thing that could possibly happen is to say, to remove the need to connect to sewer in the RD zone. Now, we could do that also. I was on the member, I was a member of the zoning board of appeals for 20 years. I'm pretty sure this doesn't meet the criteria for that, for granting a variance. I mean, please give us some direction on how we can take this land that, you know, has been owned by the Qantas, you know, charity fund for 50 or 60 years. How can we take this and make it so that the Qantas charity fund gets the money and puts it back into the community and helps out the school? Please tell us what we can do to, to make this happen, so we don't have to wait another seven or eight years for the comprehensive plan to be completed, because it was, it was being worked on the last time we submitted. We just, we'd like some direction.
Jamie?
You tell us what to do, we'll do it.
Yep, I understand.
Jamie, how can you do that without changing, changing the zone?
So I mentioned earlier that if the board decides that the zone change is not the best option, they could then change their request to a zone text amendment to discuss the actual requirement in the RD zone that requires everything except an existing lot, one single family, to connect to public sewer. We eliminated the single-family residential zone. We combined that with the RD zone, converted everything to RD zone. When that discussion was had, we discussed at very little detail this requirement for connection to public sewer. There, right now, this is the only, the only lot we're talking about, but we didn't do a thorough job of looking to see if maybe some of the other single-family, what was single-family zone properties, might have difficulty connecting to public sewer. So we could, we could, and again, I'm not making this recommendation, I'm just giving examples. We could look at changing the, the, the text of the RD zone that says multifamilies or commercial or subdivisions, or we could, we could word it however you guys want it worded, that potentially allows one or two single families to be built on septic's, and anything more than that, you could say three, you could say five, you could say 50, whatever potentially you guys wanted to discuss, you could change the provision in the RD zone as a text amendment instead of a map amendment to potentially...
So I'm more leaning that way, but it, it's tough too, because then you're, single family and residential development had kind of two distinct roles, and one of them with residential development was more density. Kind of goes against it, but I'm still leaning more that direction. I lost my train of thought. Look, come back to me.
But you're leaning towards just changing the text in the existing zone to allow for these particular two residential properties to use a septic?
Well, the, the zone itself. I mean, because the big issue is the single, the, the lots that were single-family now have the septic requirement. You know, in that, like, there's probably a couple of lots that could be challenging. My only concern is, no matter what we do, if the sewer department has that requirement of 200 feet, is there anything that we can do that would, that bypasses that?
They could transfer some of the land to a butter, so that it's not part of the parcel, then taking it out of that 200 foot. So that was discussed a little bit at site plan. So yes, the, if, if the ordinance is changed where potentially in remote parts of the RD zone where public sewer is not...
There's ways around.
Reasonably extended.
Right.
However it's worded. Again, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to write it tonight. If we go that route, we would tell the applicants that you guys don't recommend the approval to council, and then they could choose to take it to council and have this discussion at council level, or they could choose to say, okay, as Mark just did, we, we want this to happen. I'm not diehard asking for a zone map amendment. If you guys think zone text amendment might be a better option, let's, let's switch to that. Yeah. If that's the case, then staff will take a little bit of time to try to see if there is one other lot, 10 other lots, 100 other lots, that this might be a, a problem for, and then try to work with you guys to draft language to, to maybe, it's, again, it wouldn't be just to help this lot. It, it might, it would be a...
Any lots.
A text amendment for the whole zone that might or might not help other people as well.
Right. I appreciate that because...
Jamie?
Sorry. Hold on one second. Sir, I, what I appreciate, appreciate about this is that we can't, we can't be held limited to the sewer system itself, right? You can't build a house unless you can get the sewer system out there. We're, we, it sounds like the sewer system itself has its limit, and we have a need to build housing, and we have property. So this opportunity for some language to allow it is interesting, and I'd like to, I'd like what I hear.
And, and I'll remind the board and the applicant, I did mention 20 minutes ago now, that there's a very real chance they could do one more house tomorrow on a septic, which would give them the ability to, to do this year's house without a zone change required. And while I will say Mark is correct, we've talked about a comprehensive plan update for 10 years at this point. He said seven, which has actually been 10. And it has not happened. It, it is happening. It's not going to stall again. And in, in a semi-timely fashion, we will have a comprehensive plan update, and with that's going to come a zone change. So hypothetically speaking, even if both properties that came today received zone changes at council in a month, potentially in six months, we change that map again, and, and it's no longer the urban zone. And they might or might not be able to do it again. So there's very real possibilities. The zone and map, as you look at it today, is, is going to be a antique relic. So...
One, one suggestion, I think that might work, even though technically, if we got this zone change and we were splitting this lot, because it's been after five years, we wouldn't have to go to planning board. It could be that a simple change might be that the planning board has the ability to grant a waiver of connection to sewer. So even though technically, we wouldn't be able to get it split and create two lots, we would have to go to the planning board to get the waiver. So that's a great way, I think Jamie suggested, that if you have the ability to grant a waiver, like you do sidewalks and so forth, that that would be a great way of making a minor change for these lots that seem to have been kind of stuck in limbo with the combining all SFR into RD, that the planning board would have that ability to make a good decision based on unique situations to its lot. And that's in the, that's in the comprehensive plan. On page 8... to a lot, and that's in the, that's in the comprehensive plan, on page 8-3D dot 11.
Thank you.
So, that is a potential zone text amendment in the RD zone, specifically in that provision. You could put a waiver provision for the planning board on, you could, you could decide if you want to put specific reasons now, you wouldn't have to, but that, that is a potential zone text amendment that could be done with less research potentially on how many lots might be affected. It could be a, a case-by-case specific, that if the planning board feels the applicant has demonstrated connection to public sewer is not feasible, then the board would have the ability to waive it.
And Jamie, if you're bringing up this case of, you know, the, maybe build one lot, if we can build one house, one thing we could do, and I've done this in other communities, is you say, well, I've got a three-acre lot, and I can only build one house and not connect to sewer. I can then sell this lot that's gonna be larger than it needs to be, and reserve Qantas the right to go in and buy another lot in five years part of that parcel, so that we create another house. So, that might work too.
That would be a little bit harder to put in ordinance, so, again, I think there's, I think there's easier ways to, to create methods on extenuating circumstances, but.
Yes, yes.
Just looking for a way to make it happen.
You're getting creative, absolutely.
Well, as far as it goes, I think we're all against the zone change. Is that correct?
But how do we feel about the zone?
Well, that's not what we're discussing. We're discussing a zone change.
Correct.
Either yes or no.
And that goes to say council?
And then, yeah, he can go to council, zoning board of appeals, wherever he wants to go, and then we can discuss this further on what, what we can do.
So, I agree. I think the right procedure would be for you guys to, to do your, your vote on the zone change recommendation, and then the applicant could then choose to ask for a change from a map amendment to a text amendment, or they could choose to go to council.
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
Is the motion always in the affirmative?
I'm sorry?
Is the motion always in the affirmative?
No, you can make a motion not to recommend approval to the city council.
All right, I make a motion that we not recommend approval to the city council.
Second.
All those in favor? Do we have? Five? Can I count? Five?
I'm just gonna abstain.
Abstain, okay, and one absent. Any discussion? Okay. Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say that the city council is really the ultimate source of the authority to, whether to grant us the ability to give waivers. I mean, it's
So, again, yes. Again, if the applicant says, okay, we want to change this to a, a zone text amendment, it would go through you guys at another date. You guys would then make a recommendation to the council for whatever zone text amendment we come up with as a, as a group, and then the council would then have to vote on that text amendment, correct?
Yep, okay.
So conceivably, they could come back next meeting with that request.
They, they might not have to. Council doesn't have to side with the same vote.
Council have to have two readings, correct?
Any, any zone change has to go for two reads, with a public hearing at the council level.
Yes. Okay.
So, so Mark, I think what they're saying is they, I think they agree that we might be able to work through a zone text amendment, if you would like to chat about that tomorrow.
Let's do that. I appreciate, and I, and I really appreciate, I understand where you guys, the planning board's coming from, it's a very challenging issue, and I appreciate the discussion and, and kind of giving us some, you know, guidance on what we need to do.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda item number four, this is new business, public hearing file R12G-9, 17 Oak Ridge Road, commercial farm site plan, application and site plan for change of use for, from single-family residential to commercial farm due to the number of chickens on the site surpassing the number allowed by the residential domesticated chickens ordinance. Jamie or Aaron, would either of you like to get us acquainted?
Yes, this is gonna be a little bit different. So, typically, as part of any process that goes before a board, the applicant is required to prove right title and interest. Typically, that review is done at staff level. In this case, over yesterday and today, I have had conversations with the city attorney regarding right title and interest. The city attorney brought it to my attention that due to the fact that there's a deed restriction in this residential subdivision that states they agree not to maintain animals, livestock, or fowl, other than household pets frequently found in urban residential homes, that because the use being requested is in a deed covenant restricted for that development, that the applicant, in fact, does not have right title and interest to request this use. So, any decision of the planning board has to come from you, not from me. So, really, what needs to happen is, before we hear the case, we have to determine if they have right title and interest, and that has to come from you guys. So, again, I, I talked with Mary Costigan, our city attorney, or one of our city attorneys, and her email to me this afternoon says, hi Jamie, the board would discuss it when determined in right title or interest to do the activity sought. If they don't have right title and interest, then there is no need to continue the review. Because, again, without right title and interest, they, we can't continue the review.
So, in this case, because I, I agree with you, it sounds like we cannot move forward. What do we do in this case? Would we?
You would, you guys would discuss it as a board, and I would recommend we make a, a vote, that the planning board votes not to move forward with the application if you guys decide, that you would make a vote that the planning board not move forward with the application due to the lack of standing in the right title and interest.
Now, because this was advertised as a public hearing, would I still go through the motion of opening? No? Okay.
Again, if there's no right title or interest, we can't move it forward.
No, that makes sense, I just wanted clarification. What are the board's thoughts with not moving forward?
So.
Go ahead.
Can I just ask clarifying? So, we normally don't deal with deed restrictions on individual lots, but this was a deed restriction that was part of an approved subdivision plan?
Correct.
Since the application lacks right title and interest, I would be in favor of not further discussing this application.
I would second that.
Let's take a vote. For those who are in favor?
Say that again?
Can you word it again, so it's clear?
Due to the fact that this application does not carry the right title or interest, I am in favor of not discussing this application. That is my motion.
I will second that again.
Thank you. Those who are in favor? It is unanimous? Thank you all.
I would just like to say.
I would like to point out that deed also says no four-wheel vehicles at all in the deed, also in many of the places on the other side. So, the deeds, that means people should not have vehicles. It means that they should not have lawnmowers, four-wheelers, any of that stuff. Your zone ordinance does say it allows chickens and all of that stuff. So, I mean, the, the deed is, it also says that we're supposed to have streetlights, it should be double in size for all of the roads.
So, we, we understand that, but at this time.
And it was recommended that I do this, and that I cough up $800 to do it, and this is the way forward, which is frustrating.
Well.
So, here's, here, I would like to
No, no, I'm actually gonna stop this conversation right here, because we have agreed as the board to not pursue this application at this time. With that, we're gonna move along down the agenda to other business with planning director's report.
Just the broken record that I've been for the last two years, the planning department is continuing to receive applications, currently at an alarming rate. So, there is no rest for the weary. You, you guys will be having full agendas for several meetings to come, and we had two more pre-apps today, so it looks like the trend is to continue with a decent agenda coming forward. So, as I tried to say, thank you to all city staff for their efforts in this, and thank you to you guys, for you guys' effort in it as well.
Excellent, thank you. Communications, does anyone have anything they'd like to add? Can I motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
Thank you. Enjoy the evening, everybody. Thank you.
Can we vote on that?
Oh, yeah, let's vote.